Judy, would you call to order in the role of members?
Yes.
Okay, you done that? Okay. We are going to move number four to number two in the absence of our president so that Amber can continue moving the meeting.
Board to consider and take possible action in the absence of president and/or clerk to appoint an acting president or an acting clerk for the school district to execute any and all documents pertaining to setting the maturities, date, time, and place of the bond sale.
And I recommend we make the motion to appoint Amber as the acting president and would one of you like to become the clerk this evening? It's really not a very hard job, you just have to...
Signatures.
Signatures. Okay. And Desiree is clerk for the school district to execute any and all documents pertaining to and setting maturity, date, time, place of the bond sale.
Make a motion to make such action.
It's okay. Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go back up to what was two, approval of consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items, A through K.
We have, one thing I would like for Ms. Richmond to maybe clear up for us is out-of-state travel to Wichita, Kansas for the fifth grade, make any amendments or changes to that that you need to at this time.
That's supposed to be for third grade. Third grade is either going to the zoo, Wichita Zoo. Fifth grade students, I think it was.
So it'll be the third grade going to the zoo.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be fine. And then we do have out-of-state travel to California for the FCC LA qualifying for nationals. We had quite a few students that did an amazing job and are going to be able to go. She told me, I think anywhere from 10 to 15 kids will be traveling on that. And then we have a lot of FCC LA kids recognized nationally for their work. And we also had our FCC LA sponsor on the stage getting an amazing award also. She didn't tell anybody she was getting it, so nobody went. And I saw at the grocery store, I said, "You know, had we known, we probably would've shown up to support you." She said, "I didn't tell anybody." So I didn't tell Erin, because she just doesn't want to be... And I'm like, "Well, we're gonna have to do something for her, because she really is pretty darn amazing." And then on K, acceptance of resignations, you do have one in your pocket for Casey. You know, he's an amazing worker for us. He's gonna go and figure school out at Southwestern, and I'm really glad. I think he needed a couple of years to not have to be all about school and do something else, but now I think he's, even if he doesn't go back full-time, I think he's ready to... Is Casey's in there?
I don't, I never saw the letter, so they don't have anything.
Okay, well, I've got one for Casey. So, oh, Lord, his last name's escaped me, Judy. Casey?
Click.
Click.
Click, yeah.
And so, we'll miss him. And then also, I have a letter from Tommy Hudson, our act teacher. He's taken a position with Kyle off, and we wish him the best. He's done an excellent job for us, and we appreciate all that he's done, and his wife's family's from there, and just kind of a pool to go that direction, and I get it. So, well, we will do our best to get a really good act teacher for our program, because we definitely want to make sure that we don't miss a beat and we're as good as we can be. So, those are my, those are my comments on our consent agenda.
Do we have any discussion on any other items? Do we have a motion? Et cetera? Not the...
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
With the amended for the third grade?
Amended third grade.
Okay.
Accepted or recommended.
Yeah, amended third grade and accepted resignations.
Judy?
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Okay. K, three, presentation by Boynton Williams and Associates on a FEMA grant for a future fifth and sixth grade center that can serve as community shelter.
You know, I've kind of been talking about it for a few months, kind of showed you a little bit of planning. Tom and I discussed it. Ron is integral part of the FEMA planning. And after this, after we had our meeting, Corey contacted me and said, "You know what? Why don't we look at making them a little bigger, not just four classrooms?" And so what you've got here is plans that show the original building that Tom and I discussed, and then we added an event center, and then we added some more classrooms. And so, I did, I want to introduce Mike Jones. I asked him to be here tonight, he's my new city manager, because what the goal is to also provide a community shelter, because we are really limited in the places that are, what FEMA considers to be regulated for shelter. And so I definitely want the city's input, and our guys from the BWA are tonight to kind of tell you what's going on, and I'm gonna shut, and then Tom take over.
Thank you, Ron. And thank you for having us again. This is Ron Redrow.
I'm not an architect. I'm an extruder, Ben. Tom is here.
And he is a master at FEMA grant proposals. So, what I've got in front of you are three different drawings, and what I'd really like this to be is kind of more of a discussion, this isn't any way sort of a sales pitch or anything like that. These are options that we've talked about and looked at, and, you know, still to determine exactly what your needs and wants are. So this kind of tells you the pros and cons, and I'll kind of spill it out, and Ron will talk about the application process and answer any questions you've got. So, we've got three plans in front of you. The first one started out as kind of a combined administration and a fifth and sixth grade four-classroom wing, with the idea that using the FEMA grant proposal, which sometimes can take a year to three years to get a response on and get the money. And the money's always, every time there's a disaster, and Ron can talk about that in a minute, it replenishes, so it's inevitable that you will get it, it's just a question of how long typically, and how many other schools are applying. So it's just, once you get in the hopper, if you do get it, when you do get it, then you'll get, you know, a couple million dollars to put towards a safe room. They pay 75% of the construction cost. So, if you kind of do the math on that, for example, the first paper we just talked about, this is about a $3 million if you're just construction cost for that portion. If you get FEMA to pay their 75% of this, it's like 1.7 from FEMA, free money, and 1.2, so now instead of having to call for a $3 million bond to get this kind of building, you only have to bond out a million too. Okay? So that's kind of how the idea started. And it gives you a head start, once you get the FEMA money, you've got three years to spend it. So you don't have to call for a bond issue to, you can wait until you get approved for the grant. And you may even change what your needs are in that time, but it gives you a whole lot of flexibility. And again, it's free money that you can use to, and these safe rooms, we've done several hundred in Oklahoma, are firm, again, not trying to sell, but just our experience with safe rooms. Almost every building we do, if we can, we do one, because the cost of it's about $80 more a square foot versus typical construction. It's concrete box, concrete lid.
We've done 540 safe rooms and 190.
So, we've probably done more than any architect in the United States, just because it's Oklahoma.
What I'm familiar with is about 20 of those have been FEMA funded, so that I'm...
Most schools just pay out of pocket, so if you can get them to front the bill for 75% of it, it's a pretty good deal for the district. We looked at three different options. The first one was just four classrooms, and we also looked at what if we could turn it into a community safe room and find a way to maximize the safe room component. I think in this first drawing, it's about 50/50. So the second version, the first one's big enough to house your school district, or basically your entire school, about 450, 500 people, okay? This one will house 1,300 people, which is the majority of the town, but not all the town. FEMA pays for community safe rooms, kind of the same logic. And what this would do is give you, again, some administration, a small avenue for the classroom portion, and then the district administration, and then also we added in a multipurpose room that would take some pressure off your existing gymnasium in terms of activities. We talked again about the possibility, Donna had already mentioned, about adding some more classrooms. So page three is this version with four more classrooms. And we looked at doing, just sticking them on the backside, maybe as conventional construction, but it just doesn't work well design-wise to have to go through the gym to get to the next thing, classrooms. And you really want the safe room to be continuous, not in pieces and multiple ones. So, that's kind of how that worked out. This is actually probably bigger than you need. This will house 1,770, which is bigger than you'd... Give or take on how many of the world community you could bring into that. But, it might be you decide, okay, we only need six classrooms, or we need all four, but we don't need the multipurpose. But again, these are all just kind of talking points for you all to kind of bounce back and forth and decide what each year needs the best. The logic I would recommend using is the more you can put into the safe room, the better, because again, it costs more, it's 350 a square foot versus 280 a square foot, but 75% of it's paid for. So the more you fit in the safe room, the less the school district is out of pocket or the community's out of pocket in terms of a grant, or not a grant, but a bond issue. And so anyways, those are kind of some ideas. Ron, talk a little bit about the application process that we do, and then just open it up for questions, maybe you'll have.
The 350 that Tom mentioned is a figure we use, because when you do the grant, you really don't want to ask for money and then not get enough. So, we've never really had a safe room come in with $300 a square foot. We ask 350 in the grant, and all that happens is you just, whatever money you don't use, they just, they just keep, it's not amounts to... We do that to be cautious, make sure you do get enough money, because you have to get it halfway done.
And also, this could be about five years from now, and we don't know what construction costs are going to be either.
It's really a, when I was superintendent in the cloud, we built two there, both of them practice gyms, about three and a half million dollars, and we only paid like 75% of that, whatever that is, so just less than a million dollars.
And inside of them, if I could jump in real quick, it looks like a classroom, it looks like a gymnasium, it looks like whatever you want it to be.
Whatever you want it to look like.
You don't see the concrete, you don't see the, if it's got windows, then it can have windows in the classroom. You have a FEMA-rated shutter that's above the ceiling, and with, you know, storms approaching, you drop them all down. And we used to do it with doors, now we're starting to do it with the shutters, you can do either one. FEMA-rated door hardware, steel doors, naturally all the things that sets it apart, because you have that in a wood door, and you have a steel door, you won't have side lights by your classroom.
I'm actually, the first three pages of this is, is about the company and what we've done. The fourth page actually came from OEM, the Commerce Management, from their website. So it looks like, you know, they, I think maxed it out at $3 million at their part, so...
And kind of, it's a good calculation point to come off of. You know, like I said, that last version I showed you is bigger than that, so that's, we need to pare that down to get it within a...
And the safe rooms, the size of your safe room is driven by the population. They do call it community safe rooms, and you use the town population within a half-mile radius, and what we look at, just if you put it where we think you're gonna put it, almost covers the town. It's a lot of the farm area, but over in the west side, this is a little bit of that. If you could help us with population there?
Yeah, the last census, it was like 16, something, was our population. So what do we have on that third version?
Acceptance.
Okay, so we're not that far, about 100 over.
Right.
And what would help us is, the only thing that we have is, I mean, this was built way back when, it's a bomb shelter, and it's not ADA compliant, I don't have, if somebody handicapped, literally have people pick them up and take them to a safe area, so this would be a tremendous...
The square footage is carried in by five square feet per person. And then every 200 people, you have to add an additional five feet or 10 feet for those people that are with disabilities. If you have a nursing home, if you have a nursing home, good. I mean, it's, square footage wise, it'd be great, but if you have a nursing home, then the bounty is 25 square feet. So, you know, you can really look at, if it's coming with a tornado, I don't need five square feet, probably two or three of them, maybe you and I can get it in five square feet.
Well, these squares are two foot, and so, we've got that big of an area.
So really, you pretty much can house...
Chubby Jackson.
Once we built that, the cloud, when I was there, were about 1,000 each, is what the population was, about 5,000 square feet, a little over. You probably could put 2,000 people in each one.
You can put a lot more in there than they allow.
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone would say anything against you if you did, we just can't post occupancy.
But, again, I've never known an application that wasn't funded. The two of the cloud were funded within six months of each other, but we had our own mitigation plan, but it was like four years after getting funded. It's a lot quicker than it now. The funding is generated for mitigation by the number of events you have, declared emergencies in the state, and every how much money comes in, 15% of that goes into what they call mitigation, which would be safe rooms. They take 12% of that 15%, and give it to fire departments and so forth for generators and things like that. Then the rest of it goes into community safe rooms. So if there's a big disaster, quite a bit of money is available. Last time I heard, they had $10 million still available, so, and that's been about a year ago. It is a good problem.
And they kind of work in order, don't they?
Yeah. The way we handle it at the BWA, and I've included a contact there, is it's, once we submit an application, the company will bill you 5,000 dollars. But, once the application's approved, you're gonna get 75% of that back, because FEMA pays 75%. And once it's approved, okay, once it's approved, we're gonna give you 5% of the grant amount, not the construction cost, but just whatever you get from FEMA. Again, 75% of that is paid by FEMA also. What amounts to a million dollar project, ELO, BWA, I think it's 12,500, 1,507.
After all the reimbursements and everything.
Yeah, after all the reimbursements. So it's really a good deal. Basically what we do is, we'll have Donna with the grant writing, or her machine designates with the grant writing, getting it in, getting the information that you need, which is a time-consuming process. Part of it is just getting the letters from the different groups, like archaeological, historical, your poor engineers, all those people have to sign off on it. My sinuses are eating me up. And then, once it's funded, then whatever is, whatever we estimate the cost at, your payments have to match that form we send in. Company has a professional estimator, he's licensed, certified, and he will do your estimate for you. Then we will help you match those reimbursements, which is quite a chore. It's like Title I, you spend the money, then they reimburse you. But they're really good, about a 30-day turnaround is what we've experienced on that. I'm sure I'll have something else, any questions on that?
One of the things with the community safe room, it's not a huge deal, but you know upfront, people will try and bring animals. So it's just one of those management things you have to work out with the city as far as, you know, the rules and the guidelines for a community shelter in a public school. And just, you know, is the public in one area, are the kids in another? You know, those are things, they're all work around, but you kind of want to have a plan ahead of time, and the community will work with you, you just don't want to surprise them.
75%. Part of it also is, like the architectural fees, the 6% that's traditionally charged, FEMA's gonna pay 75% of that, so... Which if you just filter that right with that payment, you'd end up paying the 75%.
Thank you.
Anyways, just whatever thoughts y'all have, be happy to answer any questions you have, pros and cons, and what else?
Anyone have any questions about the building at all, or, you know, we talked about who it will house? It will most likely be a fifth and sixth grade center, so that we can get those developmental grades together out from under the roof of the elementary, because they're not really elementary kids anymore, and they're really a little bit lost in high school, middle school. It gives them a good location for being able to get to lunch, music, PE, and still kind of have a little autonomy and have their own kind of place to, to be really ready to go into the junior high in the seventh grade. We have also talked about it being a childhood center, but I think that, once we move the fifth grade out of the elementary, of course, they're in portables right now, but we, I really felt like, and I think maybe you really might feel the same, that there would be so much more that would be needed to make that, that building early childhood-ready than just an event center in six classrooms. I think, you know, when you're looking at an early childhood center, you really need to have a developmental play place, you need to have different size bathrooms, different size everything. So I think logistically, and for our overall picture, the fifth and sixth grade center was a better match for what we're doing and for what our needs are.
As far as floor plans, there's nothing about those that are locked in stone. The only thing that gets locked in stone, once you receive, you send off the application, is really gonna be square foot area of that safe room. But as far as what it looks like, how you spend those square feet, there's a lot of flexibility there.
And we can change the safe room around, if you want the classrooms to be safe rooms, the students don't have to move at all. That may be a more expensive area than, than like the gym area.
What we have designed right now is really the, most of your student population could fit into the classrooms, and the community could use the multipurpose room.
Right.
So you don't have the intermingling, you can keep your student body secure.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody? Papers? The city, anybody?
Like I was telling Donna a little bit earlier, I think probably what you would be looking at, if we're looking at some versions of these three, would be something between page two and page three, that'd be a little smaller than this. Unless you wanted to have it big enough for the whole town, for growth.
No.
That would be the only argument for that, really. But if you could fit the town like you have now, probably with minus two classrooms.
I think that's what I, I would like to see, is do a six classroom, one event center, and that gives us two rooms for growth, or for music, or for band, or for, you know, anything that you might need for that.
Hey, if one designed in a certain way, you could make one classroom that was two in size.
Oh.
You know, so I mean, you could have one room here, and then one, two, three, four individual classrooms. So there's ways around, you can have some flexibility out there for a band, or for music, or for whatever. Or split it up small.
Well, if you all don't have any more questions, then I'm gonna say thanks for coming. I know that they came from Norman and appreciate it, and definitely, I think last month, we voted to proceed with this, and I don't think I've done the contract work yet, though.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll get you registered in.
And I do, I just, I do want to say that we are, we are at the mercy of the county mitigation plan that's being rewritten right now. And they're doing a really good job of getting that done, it's just that it's not done right now. And so I'm not sure how that will work with us. If we were to get our application finished with the county...
I have access to the application, even though it can't be opened in Cherokee Public School name, I can get a blank copy, and we can get the letters...
You get all the work done.
We can get all the work done, all the paperwork put together, all the questions answered, and as quick as they get...
The plan approved.
Plan approved, so we have a date, because they ask you, do you have this questionnaire, do you have a mitigation plan, and when was it, what date was it approved? Then they'll open the actual application, you can go into the computer, and we can just fill it in then.
She's hoping to have it done by the end of the week. I got it late last week, and she said get it done right away, and there was a couple other people that she was waiting on, but then there has to be a community forum after that, so people can talk about it. But she's hoping the paperwork side is done by the end of the week.
You can count, you can count, tonight's meeting is talking about it.
Oh, she can? Well, I've got a form, she sent to me, it's like incoming, of what I've done in, should I put that on, this meeting on that first?
Yes.
That you can count as...
We've talked about the safe room and the mitigation plan, so...
Okay.
It was a public meeting, so...
Okay. So, can she use this meeting as her public meeting, or does she have to have another one? Because it's not posted.
I believe she has to have another one, because so the community knows exactly what they're talking about.
They'll ask you about the school too, so...
Yes.
This could be your school.
This can count as, as one.
Has she? She has all the plan done, or you guys just signing off on it now?
I got my, my plan in here quite about the same time you did, and I think she's, like you said, she's waiting on other people and...
Well, I'm not quite, so I've only been on the job a week. I got it late last week.
There, do this.
It was due last month, so, but she told me late last week that she's trying to get her people done by Friday, so she's working on people pretty hard.
Okay. Some more stuff you want to...
It was good news.
And well, it will go into OEM, which is Oklahoma's Emergency Management. They'll review it, come back and ask questions like they always do, and at that point, they'll go to Route 6, which would probably end Dallas, and then they'll review it. And so, you know, by the time we get the application done, maybe they'll have it approved.
Okay.
Well, it's not sitting still, too.
The government, they just don't move pretty fast. Hope there's no unemployment, please.
Well, thank you guys again for coming, and that information was good, to be able to tell, tell that she can use this meeting as one of her public meetings, that's all.
Check with her, I think she can.
Okay.
If you post it in this community, really could have been...
Yeah, yeah, FEMA grant for, it's a great thing, it's a good service.
Yeah. So we'll, from your standpoint, for the application.
I've done my part.
You've got, you've got an agenda.
Hey, well, thank you guys so much for presenting.
Thank you again for having us.
Pretty exciting, really, to pay 75...
Thank you very much. Great to meet you. Call me if you need to.
Thank you.
You're fine, keep me seated. See you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Good to meet you.
Well, I mean, that's pretty exciting stuff, and, you know, I talked with our bond agent about, you know, the possibility of if we get this grant, what's it look like for running a bond in three, four years? Because I don't want to go back to people and send them raising taxes, I don't want to do that. But I can't promise that it wouldn't increase the amount of time that we're paying for something. But, I feel like when you can get this much for 25%, and then it can also serve as something for the entire... and then it can also serve as something for the entire community in our, in our world where tornadoes are definitely a problem from time to time, I think it's worth the effort of trying. So, so that's pretty exciting. So, if anybody else has, nothing else on it, we can go to number four.
Board to consider and take action on a resolution determining the maturities of and setting a date, time and place for the sale of seven hundred fifty-five thousand taxable combined purpose building bonds of this school district and designate bond council for the issuance of bonds.
Okay. I'm going to make the recommendation that we take action on the resolution and determine the maturities of and set the date of May thirtieth at noon. Be a lunch meeting that I'll have lunch for you. And it will be at noon at the, in the high school library for the sale of the seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollar taxable combined purpose building bonds of the school district and designate bond council for this insurance of the law. I want to be real clear, we're not putting anything out for a new bond. We are just approving that we're going to pay the ones we have. That is all this meeting does is pay what we have. So my recommendation is to.
I make the motion that we take action and set a resolution time of May thirtieth at noon in the high school library for the sale of the seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollar taxable combined purpose building bonds for the school district and designating bond council for the issuance of the same bonds.
We have a second, a second. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Number six, vote to approve or disapprove of statutory waiver exemption application to have our parent teacher conferences following a regular school day for the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
That is something that we have to do every year for accreditation if we're going to have a parent teacher conference on the same night as we have a school day. So we're basically doing two days in one and then we're out the Friday before a weekend or something like that. So I recommend that we continue that practice and have our parent teacher conferences following a regular school day for the nineteen, twenty school year. Unless anybody would like to ask questions or add a discussion.
Question to approve. A second. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number seven, vote to approve or not to approve the hospital eighteen sixty-four method where Cherokee Public Schools documents ten, oh, thousand eighty hours of school instead of the traditional method of one hundred and eighty days for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
We're, I'm going to ask that you approve this, there's legislation on the table right now that in the event that it passes, I'll probably just have to go back to square one for our calendar next year because they're going to put some conditions on the thousand eighty. You have to, if you want to go less than X amount of days, you're going to have to have special approved, specially approved by the board of education, state board of education. So I think that what I'll do is just wait. But I will ask that you approve this now so that I can get my letter in for next year so that I have my paperwork done in the event that that legislation does not pass.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Judy.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Number eight, consideration of vote to continue service contracts for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year with Barlow Education Management for Federal Programs Management, TLE Management and Special Education Allocation Management.
I really, I can't say enough about Barlow, they do an excellent job. The TLE management is, is really. Ruth does our federal programs here on the side and she works with them to make sure that we get those applications right. And they're so particular. I always say that it's the most work that you'll ever do for the least amount of money in anything you're doing. But it's definitely money that we use and, and then they also do our special education allocation management so that everything is right and that's what we want. And when we're audited, we can always show that we're correct in our process. And so I do recommend that we stick with Barlow Education Management.
Question that I have, is the service contract amount the same as it was on?
It has not. I, they did not say, I'll put it this way, they did not flag to me that their services were going at next year. But if they did, I will bring that back to you.
Do I have a motion to approve or not approve, to continue the service? Motion to approve. I'll second. Judy.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number nine, vote to approve or disapprove resolution for schools and libraries universal services E-Rate for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 applications for funding year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty and the payment of the application's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
This is for E-Rate. It is another program where they pay X amount of dollars for our internet services or there's a multitude of things, it can be equipment, it can be servers, it can be services. But it's all kind of driven by our free and reduced lunch numbers, how much they pay either seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent of what we're doing. And so we, this is kind of housekeeping. If we want them to continue to pay for some of those services, we have to approve it. And that's what the 471 is. Those forms are for basically bids that have gone out and come back and giving, we're giving them approval to do that on our behalf.
Do we have any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That's pretty easy for the 471 applications in the funding year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Have a second? I'll second. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Number ten, consideration of vote to pay the tuition for Cherokee High School juniors attending NWSU for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year or until such time as NWSU reinstates the funding or Cherokee Public Schools cannot continue its financial obligation. CPS will pay for six hours per year per student.
They have not made any indication that they're going to continue to pay, or pick that back up. We are financially able to pay for our juniors to go concurrent enrollment. And along with that, it goes, it's their fees, their books and their tuition. And it's also, it is like, like you said, they pay it first, they finish their responsibility and then we reimburse after the fact.
Make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Judy.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number eleven, discussion of vote to continue physical therapy services with Today's Therapy Solutions for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
They do a great job. Do you feel like they're good and timely and? So I recommend that we stay with them.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion? Make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Number twelve, proposed executive session to discuss the employment status of certified and/or support personnel for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty as per attachment A so that the board can return to open session and vote to employ or not to employ certified and/or support personnel as listed on attachment A for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. This executive session permitted by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B one. Number thirteen, vote to convene or not convene into executive session. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to convene into executive session. I'll second. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Time?
Seven forty-one.
Number fourteen, vote to acknowledge return to open session, do I have a motion to return?
I'll make that a motion. Return.
I'll second. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes, at eight thirty-one.
Number fifteen, in the executive session, we discuss the employment status of certified and/or support personnel for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty so that the board can return to open session and vote to employ or not to employ certified and/or support personnel as listed on attachment A for the school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. This executive session permitted by twenty-five OS three oh seven B one. Number sixteen, vote to employ or not to employ certified and/or support personnel listed on attachment A for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. May vote individually or as a group.
I make the recommendation that we employ certified support staff and district staff as a group with the exception of Jason Collins and Byron Connor tabling their employment until next month.
Okay, do I have any discussion or a motion to accept or decline the recommendation? Does give a print superintendent?
I'm doing both then.
Tabling two, two of the groups.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Judy.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Okay, number seventeen, principals report.
Well, we're right in the middle of testing right now. Third through fifth and it's a little bit eye opening with online, but it's, it's good. Mrs. McNeil took some of my elementary kids to the Seattle Music Festival Friday. Just she wanted to try to starve young and she has even first graders got up front, everybody insane. I think she had fourteen students and they all got one. So that was good, she felt good about it. It'll be good for future musicians. Three and four year old Roma is Wednesday, the tenth, from four to six. So excited to see who's going to show up for that. We're going to, we're doing a little PTA, thank you breakfast at the elementary Thursday morning for our PTA that does so much to support us. So we invited them to come to our Friday, Thursday finale and have breakfast with us. Fifth grade has some track weeks and field trips start last week. Fifth grade is going to do their little living history night on April twenty-ninth at five thirty to seven. And then April thirtieth is the spring music program. Grade one through four.
What is the, what is the living history date?
April twenty-ninth, five thirty. And then just field trips. Kindergarten have a little spring program on May second at two thirty. We're doing the touch community where they bring in all the helicopter and the police and fire. Kyle's kind of in charge of that. That's on May second, brings it to the elementary parking lot.
And just to say this, Kyle's touch community is being up for an award at Main Street, State Main Street banquet this year. So thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you so much, Kyle. Anyway, touch community is a very nice program and it's being honored with the opportunity to have an award, statewide award. Good job by you.
Kids are excited for it. And then elementary track week for grades one through six is nice.
So kind of busy. So you're kind of busy, yeah.
Obviously, Nita's working very hard. She does a tremendous job with ACT testing and also state testing, so she has all that under control. Doing a very good job. I know Mrs. Anderson talked about Heather. Obviously, she does a tremendous job. She doesn't get the credit all she deserves and the kids do great as well in the SCCA program. Speech and debate finished, I think they didn't run her up four years ago or something. Anyway, they finished third, which is very good. As always, Mr. Barris does a great job and the kids go down to fourth. So great job there. She talked about the choir, you have kids involved in track, softball, baseball. A lot of things going on. We do have prom this Saturday. I don't know if you're going, but we do have prom. And we are hosting regional track again. I don't know how many teams we will bring to town, but there will be a big crowd to enjoy our facility. And that's on the twenty-seventh of April. And then we'll have award banquets. And then, of course, the last week of school, there's something every night. Athletic banquet on Monday, FFA banquet Tuesday, baccalaureate Wednesday, junior high graduation Thursday, high school graduation Friday. So there's just a lot of things going on. Eighteen and a half more days.
And a lot of the eighteen days, don't we? I do want you to know next meeting, the May meeting, we've invited Toby Heiple and his parents to come and be honored for academic all state, very excited about that. I, I think we talked about it before, but I think we have lots of kids that are doing some amazing academic things and want to make sure that we recognize all of that. Honestly, pardon my, my report happened on the, with the architect and the things that we are planning for the future. And I think I've texted you both that, or all of you, all the board members, that the state department voted to allow all the schools that were going to lose money for being over their carryover, which would have been about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for us. So that was good news that we're getting to keep that. And, you know, other than that, we're just closing things down. We've stopped doing, taking general fund purchase orders for anything that is not just related to textbooks or getting ready for the next year. We're about to stop taking activity purchase orders so that we can close everything down by the thirtieth of June. We will need to have a special board meeting in the next week or so for the audit report. He cannot attend tonight, so we're going to have to do a special to approve our audit for not this year, but the last year. So just kind of, I'll text you guys all and see when we can, can be here. Other than that, like I said, we're just moving towards the end. Been a good, good year and expecting the new year to be here before we know it, so. That's it for me.
Thank you. Number nineteen, new business.
There's no new business.
Motion to adjourn. Sorry, I'll second.
Amber made the motion.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Well, hi?
Yes.
Time?